To recover here in western North Carolina. And right then and there, on Air Force One, he appointed me to a special task force. He appointed a couple of other folks to that. And I'm in the middle right now of putting a report together based off of the feedback I've gotten from community leaders, from emergency responders, from citizens, from folks that have been affected by the storm, to put on the president's desk with recommendations that me and my team have developed and how we can accelerate our recovery. Next, I just want to say thanks to all of you for helping us through this recovery. I found it extremely heartening to see churches come together, to see nonprofits come together, to see neighbors looking out for neighbors they didn't even know before September the 27th. I remember as a young child, my grandma told me of all the stories and how people came together during the Great Depression and during World War II, and they helped each other plant gardens and fields and harvest and build barns and all that sort of thing. And I thought, wow, how great it must have been to have lived in those days. Ladies and gentlemen, I feel like we're living in those days right now because we've seen so many of you come together to help one another. I want to give you just a little bit of information on some measurable pieces in our recovery from this storm. My office has assisted close to 350 individuals and families with successful resolutions of casework where they were having difficulty with FEMA. And we've now got about 800 of those cases in process. We put together a special number because I had an impossible time getting information from FEMA and the folks that needed the help that were caught up in the bureaucracy. And so I put together, or I bought a phone line, 223-FIX-FEMA, and we've publicized what?
Stop selling yourself!
Very much. So, anybody that still needs help, encourage them to call my office at 223-FIX-FEMA. We've removed nearly 5 million cubic yards of debris from public right-of-ways. 3.6 million by state contractors and 1.3 million by federal contractors. The, and we're going to get to that. The private property debris removal mission in Buncombe County has seen 450 parcels completed and work is underway at another 115 parcels. 157,000 families have received FEMA assistance to recover from the storm totaling nearly $400 million and $405 million so far has been obligated to local communities to help with the cost. 6,230 families have received $18.3 million for repair or replacement of private access roads and bridges. And as of last week, North Carolina DOT has reopened over 1,300 roads that were closed due to the storm. Yeah. The, yeah. The American, the, the, yeah. The, the, the American people sent President Trump back to the White House and Republican majorities in the House and Senate with a, yeah, with a clear mandate to restore America's economic dominance, get government out of their way to the greatest extent possible, and to secure our border. Yeah. In, in my view, our nation's debt crisis has been largely ignored far too long. And the time is now to fix how Washington works. To that end, I was proud to vote recently for the House budget resolution, which provides the framework. And you wonder why folks don't want to do these town halls? That framework provides for Congress to secure the border, to promote American energy independence, to lower taxes, and to make America more competitive. There's also much that the president can do under his Article II authorities provided by the Constitution to rein in the size of government, the scale of government, which over the decades has become unwieldy and largely accountable on a massive scale. And so...
You're not allowed to cut our jobs, make our money.
Yep.
Do your job!
Yep.
Do your job that you were sent there to do.
Yep.
Remember it at all.
Thank, thank you for that feedback.
You're lying! I'm a veteran, you don't give a fuck about me!
To, to be clear...
Fuck you! I can't stand the way you're doing it! You don't get to do it, boy! Fuck you! Fuck you!
So, to be clear, I deeply value the contributions that federal employees make every day to keep America running and to deliver important services. For example, folks at the National Weather Service Office put out, put out critical and timely warnings ahead of Helene's destruction in western North Carolina, saving potentially thousands of lives in the process. However, it is an unavoidable reality that all departments and agencies under the federal government need to run more efficiently. And I support current efforts to identify those opportunities for making the taxpayers' dollars go farther. I will be glad to answer your questions over the time that we have remaining. I'd just like to remind you all that the disruptions are only allowing us to take less questions. I'd rather take more. And I encourage you, if we can't get to all of your questions tonight, to go onto my website, www.edwards.house.gov, and complete the form there. And press the subscribe button. There'll be much more happening in the next few months, and that's a great way to help us stay informed. Thank you, and let's start the discussion. So with that, I'd like to call up Mark Worley.
Thank you.
To draw out a question and tell me what's first on...
Will do. Thank you, Congressman. First of all, you were all given the opportunity to fill out either an orange or a pink card. If you still have cards, raise them up so we can get them and put them in the boxes. If you still have cards, someone will come by and get those, and we'll do our best to get through as many of them as we can. All right? We will start. I will do my best to read handwriting. Mary from ZIP Code 28801, what do you plan to do to make sure North Carolina does not get taken over by dictatorship and fascism?
Sounds, uh, sounds like there's a little bit of bias in that question, but to be, to be, yeah. But to be quite honest with you, we have, we have a constitution. I worked to uphold that constitution. I'm assuming that many of you have, might have some disagreement with what you see taking place in the White House right now. But I think we also have to realize that what we see President Trump doing is exactly what President Trump said he was going to do if he was elected. And President Trump was elected with a, by the lion's share of the American people. And, and, and so my goal is, in everything I do, to support the agenda that the American people sent me and President Trump and others to Washington DC today.
Our next question comes from Sherry, ZIP Code 28778. How can services of the Department of Education continue when its workforce is cut in half?
So those of you who are extremely concerned about the Constitution, let's drop back and realize that the Department of Education is not mentioned in our U.S. Constitution. Let's, uh, let's, 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 let's keep in mind that the general purpose of government is to make decisions closest to the people that we represent. I, I am, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the questions that come out of the box one at a time, and I'm going to attempt to answer those because somebody in, in good faith took time to write that down and put it in this box. I, I have supported, even as a state senator, the fact that we should abolish the U.S. Department of Education. The decisions need to be made back on the state level. It would be, it would be my, it would be my goal, it would be my goal that the decisions be made on a level closer to the people they represent, more by, more by parents and school boards than Washington bureaucrats. It would also be my goal that it, yeah. It would, it would also be my goal that we would get to the point that block grants would be sent from Washington DC to the states to make those decisions, and that ultimately we would lower federal taxes by an amount commensurate to the same so that folks weren't spending as much money as they are right now in Washington DC. So...
Our next question is from Polly from a 288 ZIP Code area. What are you doing to ensure the protection of our Social Security benefits?
Yeah. President Trump has made it clear and, all right, so now you want to hear a question about me. I'm not going to vote to dissolve your Social Security. I'm not looking to disrupt Social Security at all. That's a promise that, that's a promise that's been made to the American people. Those folks who have worked all their life and paid into that certainly deserve to reap the rewards from the promise that they were made. Yeah.
Our next question is from Aaron, 28721 ZIP Code. How do you justify cuts to staff of the VA helping veterans, especially those with long-term care needs?
So first of all, there have been no cuts to the staff at VA as of this point. The information that you have received is that there was, there was a, there was a leaked memo where there were some folks looking at the efficiency of the VA. It is not President Trump, nor Congress, nor even Elon Musk's intent to eliminate, to eliminate any job that directly provides service to our, our veterans.
Our next question is from Ellen, ZIP Code 28748. Do you represent all citizens even though they may not have voted for you, or do you work for Trump?
So I represent all the citizens, but let's be, let's be, yeah, really. But let's be real, we have, we have some differing opinions here. Every vote that I have, every opinion that I have cannot possibly align with everyone's opinion. What my job is to, to listen to the folks that I represent, to apply the principles that I have, that I told you that I would use when I went to Washington DC, and help make the decisions that cover the needs of more of the folks back here in western North
Our next question is from Gene, ZIP Code 28745, it looks like. Will the foresters who were fired be rehired to clean up the storm debris that is a fire
The easy answer to that is yes, they have. You may be aware that there was a court ruling in just the last few days that required that, that all of, that all of those probationary employees be reinstated for at least 45 days. And then, and then there would be another, and then there would be another process to evaluate where we're at there. Yeah. One more? Just hold. I feel like this is not productive with everybody yelling at me. I mean, if you want to hear, yeah. The question, the quest, the question, the questions are coming out of the box one at a time. I'm answering those for you. You're not going to like a lot of them. And you, and you certainly will have the right in the next election to cast your vote based off of what you hear coming from me now. All right.
The next question comes from Teresa, ZIP Code 28753. Um, let's get through this. Doge is cutting everything but Musk contracts. Are you willing to, are you willing to fire 25% of your staff like he's doing to others?
Now, what, what I'd like, yeah, what I, what I'd like to share with you is exactly what's taking place with Doge right now. Our government efficiency is being looked at in a way like never before. We cannot, we, 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 we simply cannot, we... So, by the Department of Government efficiency, yeah, by Doge performing the test that it is, we've been uncovering some things that I'd like to read off to you, just as example. We found a VA, we found a VA contract where $56,000 was being paid to water eight plants for five years. We found, we found a $3 million contract for organizational, organizational culture training to instruct VA leadership on what culture and values that they should have, which now has been canceled. We found a $532,000 grant that was awarded by NIH to use a mouse model to investigate the effects of cross-sex testosterone treatment. We found a $3.5 million consulting contract for larval fish monitoring at the Bureau of Reclamation, which already had been identified as nonessential. We found one point, a $1.7 million grant awarded by NIH for the China Health and Retirement Longitudinal Study at Peking University in Beijing, China. We found $327,000 in grants at USDA for increasing DEI programming. We found a $10 million grant in a small country in Africa for voluntary medical male circumcision. We found a $47 million grant for improving learning outcomes in Asia. We found, we found 300, yeah. We found $300 million in federal loans that were made, we, we found $300 million in federal loans that were made to people 115 years old and older. And yes, our, our country, our country is now in more debt than we have ever been before. $36 trillion. And, yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah. I'm gonna answer these questions one at a time. And seriously, to be respectful to the folks that took time and stood in line here, would you allow me to answer the questions? And if, if you don't like the answer, that's, that's okay. You can just wave and say, I don't believe that, but I think we owe it to the people that came and stood in line, that took time to be here, that wanted me to answer questions for me, for me to answer these questions. So, what was that question? I've lost track. What was that question?
That question was, are you willing to fire 25% of your staff like he's doing to others?
Yeah. Uh, well, I'll answer that directly. I've got a staff of about 15 that are working their butts off on your behalf every single day, so no, I don't intend for them to go anywhere. And, and, and without them, we would not have been able to address the recovery of Hurricane Helene like, like we have. Let's take another question.
Let's go to our next question from Diane, ZIP Code 28787. Why are you supporting the destruction of all of our North Carolina agencies, NOAA, Social Security, FEMA, VA, et cetera?
I think we have to look for efficiency in every single government agency that's out There, there are about, there are about 2 million federal employees that, that you are paying for every single year. There are, government has bloated exponentially since the pandemic. I believe that we owe it to the taxpayers to go and look for, to go and look for efficiencies that are, are out there. Let's go ahead.
Our next question comes from Jim, ZIP Code 28711. The large Ukrainian population in western North Carolina has been rattled by threats to end temporary protected status. Will you support extending that status until there can be an orderly return to a safe Ukraine?
Next question.
Yeah. All right, from Loretta, ZIP Code 28803. Am I going to the next question?
Yeah, let's go to the next question.
How do we get limbs and roots removed from the storm?
Call the local government in which you pay taxes. They have a process in place. They've contracted folks to remove debris. I gave you some statistics, tried to give you some statistics on where we were with that in my opening comments, but we've already removed several hundred tons of debris, and we've got, we've got a long way to go. So go ahead. Yeah, the biggest reason you can't hear me, there's so many folks trying to make noise on the top of it. Go right ahead.
The next question, Rich28739, do you feel secure in what you have voted for and
Yes. I certainly feel secure in what I voted on. And, and the reason why is that I was very clear in what my views were when I was elected to go to Washington DC in limited government, in lower taxes, in a secure America, in a secure border, in trying to provide opportunities for the younger generations, in trying to save our taxpayers' dollars, in trying to create communities that are safe, in trying to lower regulations that are adding to the inflation that you've been experiencing, and endless others. So, yes, go right ahead.
Our next question is from Lynn28787. Uh, let's get down to the question. How do you intend to support our active-duty military members and family who are stationed overseas?
The, uh, the continuing resolution that I voted on Tuesday night, for example, bolsters our military spending. It gives the largest raises to the general officers in the history of the United States. I certainly support Secretary Hedges. I certainly support Secretary Hedges' efforts to, to reduce the workforce in the Pentagon by 8% because we don't need butts in the seats in the Pentagon, we need missiles and planes and the equipment that's necessary to defend our military and our homeland.
Our next question is from Kathleen, zip code 28804. "Why do you support a president that cares nothing about NATO, Ukraine, and democracy, but cares about Putin and other dictators?"
Actually, I believe that the president is very supportive of Ukraine. I believe, I believe the president recognizes that Putin is a murderous dictator. I think it was just yesterday, he told the world that he believes that we need to increase our sanctions against Russia and probably enforce the ones that are already in place. I know that Vice President JD Vance, about a month ago, about a month ago, suggested that if Putin not come to the table for a peace treaty, then he may be facing American soldiers over in that region. I also believe that we see the author of The Art of the Deal working, working his magic to try to create a situation where folks would come to the negotiating table that might not otherwise do that.
Our next question, our next question, our next question from Jordan, zip code 28754, along the same lines. "Congressman, will you stand up for Ukraine funding and protection?"
Yes. I, I voted that way, I'll continue, I'll continue to vote that way. I spent nine, yeah, I spent nine days in Ukraine. I had, had bombs falling over my head, fired on Kiev from, from, I had missiles coming by my head in Odessa. I had an opportunity to look into the weeping eyes of widows that had lost their sons and husbands from the invasion of, of Ukraine, and I came back committed that we cannot stand idly by and watch the type of evil taking place that we see taking place over there.
Our next question is from Janet, zip code 28805. "Detail five things you've done this week to protect our democracy."
I'll be happy to do that. Let me see, let me see, let me see how quick I can do it. I participated in a two-hour classified briefing with a military outfit that is charged with creating the equivalent of an iron dome in a region that we are very interested in. I helped pass, I helped pass a continuing resolution that funded our military, gave raises to our military, kept our government running, including all the federal agencies that you're concerned with. I met with probably a dozen different media outlets and, and told them why I was gonna be here, with you here today. I am here with you today. I could go on more and more, but coming up with five things is not, not, not real difficult, so.
Our next question is from Claire. Our next question is from Claire, zip code 28715. "Our park service generates just over $55 billion with an operating budget of just over $3 billion. How do you defend park service cuts given the positive park service ROI?"
What, what my job is, is to listen to the information that I hear coming out of the administration, and then to look at how that might be affecting our district, and then go back to that administration and make a case for why some of those changes might not be in the best interest of NC-11. And I've done that over and over and over again, and I'll continue to do that. Yes.
Our next question from Lauren, zip code 28712. "If uncovering waste and fraud was the goal, why hire hackers and not auditors and forensic accountants?"
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the total premise of the question, but I'm gonna take a stab at answering it, okay? I think, I think we should, I think we should, we should have our own internal hackers involved to see where our vulnerabilities are in our systems. I think that, I think that we, we do have forensic accountants and experts at comparing databases. You know, really, like, like him or not, Elon Musk has brought a lot of really smart people to Doge. And they're, they're finding the vulnerabilities and the inconsistencies in our databases and realizing where we do not cross-reference files such as death certificates and Social Security and, and so many others. So, if forensic accounting is what you want, that's exactly what you see playing out right now. Go ahead.
Our next question, our next question comes from Blaze, zip code 28804. "Why do you support Trump's destructive and disastrous trade war?"
So, would you give me a chance to answer this question, and then you can start yelling after, after I answer it? I mean, let, let me do that. Let me, let me answer, and if you don't like it, you can boo or hiss or whatever, whatever you like, you like to do. First of all, let's, let's be forthright. President Trump told us throughout his entire campaign that he was going to be using tariffs to, to negotiate, to, to negotiate with foreign countries, and that's exactly what he's doing. And to, to negotiate, you've got, you've, you've gotta have an edge, you've gotta have something to negotiate with. And he's been able to bring foreign leaders to the table that would not come to the table otherwise. He's been, he's been, he's, he's been able to get attention from Canada because they've failed to secure their border, and they've allowed fentanyl to come into our country. He's, yeah. I thought, I thought we were gonna have the agreement where I got to answer and then you got to yell at me, okay? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not through answering. Yeah. The, the other thing I think that we have to recognize is that a, an economy really consists of many, many multiple factors. Our competitiveness with foreign nations is one of those, and so maybe to raise prices from those folks that are sending goods into the US in an effort to lower prices on those goods and services that are manufactured in the United States, to create a better tax climate for those people that work here and do business here, and then to create a, a better environmental or regulatory structure where we lower, where we lower the regulation and make it easier for businesses to conduct business here in the United States. There are many, there are many different parts of pulling together a strong economy, just like we saw in the, in the first administration. So, I'll stop there and you can yell. Go ahead.
All right, we have time for one more question from this box before we go to the open-mic portion. Our last question here, Amelia from zip code 28805. "What are you doing for your constituents regarding Musk and his minions having reading, writing privileges with the Treasury Department's database?"
Yeah, well, thank you. So, can I answer this one also before you start yelling at me? Let's, let's be honest with one another. If, if the name of the person that was running the agency was anything more than Elon Musk, you probably wouldn't be as angered about it. Because the reality is, even before President Trump was elected, there were people working inside these agencies that had access, that were required access, to the, to the information. You should, you should also know that those, those employees and folks that serve with Doge have gone through the same exact security screens as everyone else. Somebody, somebody's gonna be in charge of looking at those. His name just happens to be Elon Musk right now, so. Are we through taking questions?
We're through with these questions. We're now ready for the open-mic portion. So, when I call your name, please stand and someone will bring a microphone to you. I will read out the subject that you have a question or a comment on. Please take note that you have two minutes for your question or your comment. We have a timekeeper here who will show you the signs, so you can keep up with your time, okay? Our first comment or question comes from Lauren DeLisandro, zip code 28712. Okay. You have a question or a comment on USAID?
Does it work? Okay. I'd like to know why they would possibly cancel everything for USAID when the food and the supplies were right there and the prices, the money that they had was paying for services that had already been provided, and they left people in the countries they were with no notice and no help to get back to the United States. What kind of person does that?
And, and so, you, you know, I'm the vice chair of the National Security State Department and Related Agencies Appropriations Committee. Serving on that committee for the last year or so, I and my colleagues have had a very difficult time getting straight answers out of the State Department in where, in where... I'm trying to answer your question, these, these folks are making it difficult for me. We've, we've had a real difficult time getting the answers that we need to make informed decisions. President Trump recognized that there was a lot of money being spent out there that the American people and certainly Congress would not agree with, and so, he took, he took the, what I think was the appropriate action, saying, "Let's, let's pause, let's pause for right now, let's pause for 90 days, let's look at, let's look, let's look at these programs, and then let's decide what is relevant, what really is in the national security interests of America, and then go back and evaluate those." Just like, as an example, yesterday, in, in a hearing that I was involved in as the vice chair of this committee, I listened to the folks that, is that the head of the State Department that, that deals with the foreign aid. I couldn't necessarily agree with the total tactic, but I agree that we need to take a lot closer look at what that money is being spent. I was able to share with him a couple of personal experiences that I was involved in overseas. I told you I went to Ukraine. I had the opportunity to visit not only Ukraine, but Moldova and some of the Balkans to see how USAID money was being spent. There's, there's a lot of good being done over there to look out for widows of those that have fled from Ukraine and children that have been traumatized. And so, I was able to make a good, strong case in that meeting that that was one of the first programs that needed to be looked at to be turned back on. Just two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I came back from a trip, I came back from a trip with, from, from the Middle East, I met with the leadership of Jordan and realized, here's a very, very small country in the middle of the desert that had about 20,000 people in, in 1926, now it's got about 20 million people, and, and they are desperate for water. And, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to answer, yeah, I'm trying to answer your question in how, in, 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 in how, yeah. I think, yeah, I think, I think I answered that question. There's a lot of things going on that taxpayers would not agree with, and now it's, and now my, and now it's partly my job and my colleagues' job on appropriations to go back and recognize where the money was being spent that our taxpayers would agree with and get that turned back on. You wanna call for somebody else?
All right, our next comment or question comes from, I believe this is Mirva Price? Murda, Mirda Price, Mira Price, from zip code 28800 regarding budget cuts.
Why did you vote for the continuing resolution budget bill that will cut Medicaid, SNAP, food stamps, public housing, veterans' benefits, et cetera, when you have so many hundreds of thousands in, in this district that are depending on them?
With, with all due respect, I don't think you've read that bill because that bill didn't cut any of the things that you just suggested. A continuing resolution, a continuing, yeah, I see some talking points back there, probably some political talking points that have been passed around. A continuing resolution continues to spend the taxpayers' money at the same rate that it did in, in, in the previous cycle, and so this continuing resolution did nothing to cut those things that you're suggesting.
Our next question comes from Ed Zaron, Z-A-R-O-N, Z-A-S-O-N. Ed, Ed over here, and this is regarding the annexation of Canada and Greenland.
Do you support the annexation of Canada and/or Greenland? And this is a yes or no question. I don't want you to, I don't want you to wander off into the woods, I don't wanna hear about your latest week in your office. Okay, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to get your opinion on this as a yes or no. Do you support Trump on annexing Canada or Greenland? And do you, do you like the way he treats the premier or the president of Canada, calling him governor? Is that the way you do as a diplomat? Is that the way, is that the way the United States should act to our closest neighbors? You know? Is this, and, and I'm still, I've still got a little more time. Do you, do you, do you enjoy the way he's tried to extort minerals from the Ukraine? Do you like bullying people that need your help? Do you go for kicking the guy when he's down? Do you support Trump in these things? This is a yes or no.
The no's in there. Let me, let me answer the first one, and then there was one that really stuck out that, that I'd like to also answer. I believe your first question that you wanted, yes or no, is do I support annexing Greenland and Canada? The short answer to that is no, I do not. There was, there was another question in there, I think it was, do I support a deal, I'm gonna paraphrase it a little bit, a deal with Ukraine in obtaining minerals and helping the United with Ukraine in obtaining minerals and helping the United States taxpayer recoup the $140 billion or so that we sent over there? The answer is yes, I do support that.
We go to our next, this is Chris. B, uh, zip code 28704, Chris, regarding speaking out in support of vets. Chris? Oh, that was Chris. But his question was... Yeah, will you speak out in support of, in, in support of vets? Half of the federal workforce is vets. Barry West, zip code 28805, Barry West. A question regarding, or a comment regarding vaccines.
Okay.
What if there are more than two?
Another issue that's come to light lately is the fact that the FDA... The FDA abruptly canceled last week's, or this week's scheduled meeting that was to determine the composition of this year's... Okay. This week's scheduled meeting at the FDA that was to determine the composition of this year's flu vaccine was abruptly canceled. No rescheduling was talked about. In addition to that, the CDC also postponed its Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices meeting in February. That was to review the safety and efficacy of vaccines. At the same time, HHS Secretary RFK Jr. is still out there spreading doubt about the usefulness of vaccines in disease prevention. Does any of this concern you and what do you plan to do about it?
Well... What was your name again? Barry. Barry, with all due respect, I'm not aware of any meetings that were canceled, but I do support... I do, I, I do think that there is a, a place for vaccines. I saw an article written on, um, Secretary Kennedy probably just this morning where he was encouraging folks to make their decision about the measles vaccines. I think, I think, I think, I think, I think it's up to all, 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 all of us. And, yeah, I've had my measles vaccine and many, many others, so I think, I think we should be able to make our own, own minds up, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support your decisions to make up your own mind. That's what I'm gonna do about it. Go ahead.
Our next comment comes from Liane, L-I-A-N-E. Liane, zip code 28804. Regarding the Department of Education and Medicaid cuts.
Good evening. This is a piggyback with what was mentioned earlier about Medicaid, but it's a little different. Medicaid, as we all know, is jointly funded by the state and federal. And it appears that President Trump has mentioned that Medicaid funding should go back to the state, some parts of it. Many folks that are on Medicaid are those that have disabilities, children with disabilities, nursing care, and especially kids that are under Title I and speech services. These people cannot afford it out of their pocket. The Department of Education has mentioned that there's going to be cuts. This will affect those with disabilities and those with under Title I funding that had been protected under IDA, which is the Individual Disabilities of Education Act. How will you, Congressman Edwards, deal with this for the folks that are our neighbors, our families, and our friends?
I think, yeah. And, and, and I appreciate that question. I think that I've been very clear, I do support the abolishment of the Department of Education. Now, I also, I also agree that there is a vulnerable population out there that needs to continue to be protected, such, such as the, the disabled. And I believe that there is a way to do that and adjust federal law of what the expectation of Congress is, not that of a bunch of bureaucrats in another administration building, but what, what the wishes of Congress would be, such as states would be given, states would be given a block grant to do the things that the federal government's doing now and expected to follow the laws that, that Congress passes. So that's, that's on the education piece. On the, on, on the, on the Medicaid piece, President Trump has made it very clear to me and to other members of Congress that it is not his intent, and I believe it is not, Congress's intent to disrupt the benefits of the most vulnerable amongst us, such as the, the disabled and, and the poor that cannot afford those services themselves. And you've seen, and you've seen no action so far to, to, to make those disruptions.
Our next question or comment comes from, it's either SB or JB, zip code 28804, regarding the future of American democracy. Is there a SB or a... Here? Uh, what are you do, uh, why are you doing nothing while Trump destroys the U.S. Constitution?
I think, I think I sense a, I think I sense maybe a faction in this room of folks that, that might not have voted for President Trump. And, uh... And I'll, and, and, and I'll say that I happen to believe very much that President Trump supports our Constitution. And... I just, and, and I sleep good at night knowing that every vote that I cast is in support of our Constitution and your freedoms and, and limited government.
Our next question comes, or comment comes from Pam, zip code 28739. Pam, regarding the role of Congress.
Our president is ignoring laws passed by Congress. What are you doing to take back your power as our congressman?
Pam, I'm not sure that I agree with you on the premise of your question. But what, what I, what I think, what I hear a lot is, what I hear from a lot of folks is they, they disagree with some of the cost savings that are being put into place. So let me, let, let, let me, let me say, let me say this to you, that, well, let, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a few seconds to make a clarification, if you'll allow me to answer the premise of the question as I understand it. Because I do get a lot of feedback from folks saying, uh, the president's not spending the money that they were given by Congress. There is nothing in the Constitution that says every dollar that Congress sends, the administration has to be spent. There is, there, it is, it is very clear that those funds, in order to be respent in any other way, have to be rescinded by Congress. And so we're allowing the administration that we have right now to conduct its work. And then Congress will go back and, and look at those various cost-saving ideas and decide what, if anything, and I feel pretty sure we'll find something, some costs that, some money out there that we want to, to, to rescind. That's my interpretation of the question because I hear so many people ask it. But if you want to clarify, I'll give you a few seconds to do that.
Congress approved the IG Act in the eighties, and the IG has, I, as a former federal employee of an IG, those group, they already have investigators and auditors to investigate. Those people that are in charge of those agencies were fired without their 30-day notice as Congress mandated. Agencies created by Congress and mandated by Congress have, are having employees fired and shuttered without Congress saying anything or doing anything. Money that has been approved by Congress to pay for grain from Iowa and Kansas was approved and paid for, ship, sitting there, waiting to be delivered, and it was pulled back by the administration. These are things that Congress has approved. Congress controls the purse. You hold the pocketbook. You create the agencies. You make the laws.
I got, I've got the question now, and so I'm... To, uh... To, to half of your question, I would have to go back and say that the premise in which I interpreted it was correct, that Congress appropriates money, we do have the power of the purse. There's nothing in the Constitution that says the president has to spend every single dollar of it. It was, it was approved to be, to be sent to the administration, to, 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 to be, to, to, to be dispersed under the control of the, of the president. The second premise of your question was that there were, there were agencies created by Congress and those are still in place. No agency has been dissolved as of yet. And so there's nothing there at all that is unconstitutional. What do we got, Mark?
Our next question is from Keith, zip code 28712. Keith, regarding Ukrainian parolees.
So in 2022, I sponsored a family of three. And when they arrived, mom was pregnant, so she had a baby at Mission Hospital. She's three now. And like some of the others have said, there's humanitarian parolee status and also the temporary protected status, which my, which my family has. They have the humanitarian parolee status and the temporary protected status. And there's talk about revoking them. So it makes me very nervous that my family could be deported. So I'm asking for your help to make sure those statuses are not revoked. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, that's all for you. Yeah. Give it up for him. I, I'm... I very much appreciate the detailed question presented in such a civil manner. What I can promise you is that Madeline here has got your concern, and I'll certainly go back and study it. And if you want to provide Madeline your contact information, we'll be, we'll be back in touch with you with, with, with our learnings. There's probably more. You know that, that I could learn from you, so thank you.
Our next comment comes from Michael, zip code 28806. Michael? Over here? And this is a comment or question regarding Medicaid and Medicare.
Many of us in western North Carolina rely on Medicaid, Medicare, and/or Social Security to get health care and pay our bills. Mathematically, it is impossible to enact your proposed budget, the Republican proposed budget, without making deep cuts to these programs. What is your message to constituents who depend on these programs here?
I would say that I think that you might be referring to the budget resolution that was passed out of the Budget Committee that I sit on about three weeks ago. It did, it did make it across the House floor. It did have quite a bit of political adversity with, with, without any fact. There's nothing in that resolution that mentions the word Medicare, Medicaid, or Social Security. There's, there's, there's no intent from President Trump, nor from the current Congress, to do anything to disrupt payments for Medicare or Social Security. I have had a lot of folks rely on a statement that they feel that they heard from CBO that we don't have enough, where they may have said, we don't have enough confidence in Congress to be able, to be able to achieve... I'm trying to answer the gentleman's question, sir. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. CBO had made some statements that they didn't have enough confidence in Congress to be able to achieve what was in that budget resolution without touching Medicaid. I would, I would just say to you, first of all, is there anything that comes out of CBO that we can believe? Because they're missing, they're, they're missing their projections by trillions of dollars. And I would also say that my good friend Brett Guthrie, the chairman of the Energy and Commerce Committee, who deals with appropriation for Medicaid, believes that he can achieve the $880 billion over 10 years without disrupting payments to the most vulnerable amongst us. There's, for example, there's, there's two point, there's... And so now I want to go back to the Medicaid question. There have been $2.6 trillion in improper payments over the last 10 years. And so eliminating that alone would give, would give us the cost savings that the Budget Committee intended to find in that budget resolution. Thank you for the question.
All right, folks, we have time for one, one final comment or question. One final comment or question, and it is from Elizabeth, zip code 28752. Elizabeth? Right there? Regarding Social Security income.
There have been discussions on the Hill concerning changes to Social Security and future payments to retirees in order to keep the Social Security solvent. These include raising the eligibility age for retirees from 62 to 70, or increasing the Social Security tax from 6.2% to 7%, or making sweeping cuts to recipients' benefits of up to 25%. I have a question for you, but I want to make one more clarification before you answer, please. Would you support the raising or the elimination of the Social Security income cap of the Let me say one more thing. This change would fairly require everyone to pay their fair share of the tax. It would keep the Social Security solvent and not adversely impact recipients' benefits. As it is, millionaires and billionaires like Mr. Musk pay the same amount as someone making $176,100 per year. So would you support the raising or the elimination of the Social Security cap income of $176,100?
I've not seen any bill like that before me yet. What I can tell you with, with all sincerity is the, the issue of Social Security solvency... is the issue of Social Security solvency is one of extreme importance to myself and all of my other colleagues in Congress. And we're committed to not touching the benefits of anyone that is already in the program and reaping the promises that they have been made. But the, the reality is, we have to look at every possibility so that we can, so that we can continue to keep, to keep those promises. And I believe that the, that the people that sent me to Washington, DC, want me to make the most informed decision possible. And that I can commit to you. You know, I'm going to promise you that I'm going to look at the options that we have, keep our promises to you. Hey, this has been fun. I appreciate the opportunity to spend the last 89 minutes with you. I really appreciate the, the energy that you brought, the, the contradiction of opinions from time to time, the passion that I hear, the patriotism that I sense in this room. And I hope that you will certainly stay engaged with my office and all of those folks that are elected to represent you. Good night. God bless you all.